Overpaying the mayor, is that what he's thinking? Yeah, I think we'd agree. Yeah, they have to take that, take that. But they have. I didn't go to that, I answered that question. Good to adopt. But I've been, I want to see if I can. I'm nice. Andrew, Andrew. Words, that's a lot of words. Yeah, definitely, that's one of those they give away when you go play in a golf tournament. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, now that I've been hired, I've gotta figure out other ways to make this money, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to sell everything I have.
They're gonna procure the things to build our lease and then bring them in. Gotcha.
They should be releasing them.
We'll now call this regular workshop meeting in the Jacksonville City Council order. Council, you have before you a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would adopt, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We also have some consent items that are listed here, one through seven. And we have a set of some minutes from the May fifteenth. Special workshop, which there is an amendment, you should have a copy of the amendment at your place. The May twenty-second regular workshop and the May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen regular meeting, entertain a motion to approve those.
Move approval of the minutes and the consent items.
Second.
Here, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you now, Dr. Woodruff, to introduce your first topic.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate you being here tonight to continue our discussion with the budget for the coming year. When I first published the list of things, Carmen said to me, should we buy sleeping bags for them? I said, yes, and we're probably gonna also need some late night desserts. So hopefully, this won't take too much time, but obviously, we're beginning to get down to the final numbers, and we're also beginning to get into June, and as we know, the budget must be adopted no later than June the thirtieth. What we'd like to do tonight is really get as much direction from you on these issues as possible. And what we'd like to do is go through the list which is shown. While it looks extensive, Gail has promised me her part won't be that long, and I promise you my part will be that long. So maybe between the two of us, we can, can get through these items.
You want these to be decision topics as we go?
If you feel comfortable, because at some point, we do need to make these decisions. So when you look at the water and sewer rates, I would remind you that in the past, we showed you four options. The first one we talked about is the just-in-time rate. Remember, you're looking at the third rate or the third column down or the third line, I should say, down combined rate. This first option shows that you would have no rate increases until two thousand twenty-one, and then you can see that the rates fluctuate, and at a point in time, they get to be pretty significant. And you'll recall that we showed you what option one looks like relative to the bills. You can see that under the first option, the bill in FY nineteen and in twenty is the same as the current bill. It begins to go up in FY twenty-one and so forth, and when it gets out there towards the end in FY twenty-seven and twenty-eight, you can see it's pretty significant. You'll recall that the second option was basically an every-other-year rate increase, where you would have a rate increase in nineteen, one in twenty-one, and so forth. And you can see again what the changes in rates would be under this section, under this second option, every-other-year. This year, it would go up to fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. It would stay that way for two years, then it would go up in twenty-one and so forth. The third option is simply a one percent increase annually, and you can see that that would continue out until twenty-four, and then it would go up, and then it would fluctuate, and then a larger bill in twenty-seven. And you can see what the numbers actually look like. And then, of course, the fourth option was a two-point-two-five percent increase, and you can see that throughout the ten-year period, it would simply be an annual increase of the same amount. Now, whichever option you adopt, what you're doing is you're adopting a, what I'm gonna call, a theoretic model, but you're also adopting a one-year rate. Every year, you have the right to look at the model and say, well, have things changed? And if so, you can change your decision or stay with your decision. So here again are the rates. You can see that under this arrangement, the bill would go up in, under the FY nineteen, it would go up roughly a dollar twenty-one from the current year. So the question before you is, council, we've shown you a lot. There are a lot of pros and cons for each option, and we're just simply asking you tonight, if you're ready, to give us some direction. Otherwise, tell us what else you'd like for us to study, and then at a future date, tell us what your thoughts are.
Counsel?
I lean towards the two and a quarter. At least, and my, my argument there is it's, it's a small amount each year, and we're, as you said, we're, in theory, we're, we're looking at potential more, but we're talking about just this next year. But when I look out to the, to the future, to the last year that the model does, it's, it gives the lowest overall cost at, on a monthly basis at that, for those last years. And I, I just think that a smaller increase and a more, and a steady increase rather than up and down, a smoother increase, I think, is, is perhaps a little more palatable to me, and I hope, hope to our rate payers. So I would, I lean that way.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that. Okay, you have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion?
I was leaning toward number three, because it was a lower increase, and it was, give us a chance to, let's just say, digest this model. I can't quite put myself in a position where I'm confident that somebody can tell me what's gonna be the situation ten years from now. That's a long ways out. Now, if we had time and you could take this model back to two thousand seven and plug in everything we had then, and it could tell us, hit the mark on two thousand seventeen, and tell me for sure this is where we were and where we needed to be, then I'd be more confident. But with the, with the inputs that have been put in at this point, as far as the growth projections, maybe they're accurate, maybe they're, you know, maybe time will prove them out. But I mean, I'd like a chance to look at more scenarios of, say, you know, this was near just low, low growth. I mean, maybe look at a modest growth. Look at, you know, but say if, just take for instance, take the growth we've had in the past ten years, and say, project it for, you know, ahead for ten. Take what we've had in the past five years, project it for ten, you know, see what those do to the model. Again, I just, I, I mean, we can spin our way into an increase any time we want to. You know, we've got projects on the books that are designed for one scenario, but yet we're, you know, we're actually projecting another scenario. So with the state of the fund at this time, I'm just not ready to, to go two and a half.
Well, well, you know, we're only doing this year. We're not binding next year or the year after, the year after. We're only binding, we can only bind ourselves for what, for this current budget year. So we're not really binding anything for the future. We're just saying that, you know, at this point, it appears that a two and a quarter percent is the way to go. Next year, that may not be true.
But like you said, it's gonna be reevaluated every year, this model, right, to update it?
Yes, sir.
Even with certain changes to, even with the two and a quarter percent, and I, I agree, we can always reevaluate this year after year, but two and a quarter probably, in my mind, just, we're probably holding even with the increased cost of electrical power and a cost of living increase. It's a, it's a very modest increase, I think, in view of all the circumstances.
If I had life to live over again, I'd go back those years that we didn't raise the health insurance, and we spent our.
Reserve.
Our reserves on down. I wish that I, that I had voted to do a modest increase along to keep the reserves, at least slow it down and, and for the future, and have a chance that we could stabilize that. So I think that's, maybe, maybe that's making me lean this way, but I'd rather, I'd rather, I'd rather want, I wanna hold on to our reserve if we can, or at least spend it down slowly. I don't wanna just hold it forever. I think it needs to be spent, but I'd rather spend it down slowly than quickly.
Very good points. Any other discussion?
I read it, two-point-two-five, I agree with that as well. I'd rather have a, because we can hold it next year if we have to, which, instead of, you know, having to catch up on the other end, I'd rather make it a gradual increase and think cost of doing business is going up and not going down, so more than likely, we're gonna have to see some kind of increase in the future anyway.
We do. You know, we, we know that this is a new model. We know our folks aren't experienced with it yet, perhaps, and they're gonna learn some things. But I think this is a good conservative approach for, for the, for the, for the immediate future. Not, maybe not down the road, but for the immediate future.
Any other comments, discussion?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Thank you. Mr. Ward, and I was a little concerned there when you said if you had to live your life over. I thought you were gonna say you would've gone to UNC. He did, he did. Don't worry. I mean, I know you're wearing Duke colors today, but, okay.
That's not one of my regrets.
You getting a vote on that?
Yes, I did.
The next is authorized positions, and we explained this a little bit in the memo which you received on Thursday. These are the full-time, benefited, part-time, and non-benefited, part-time positions. You will notice that the full-time went up by one. We discussed with you the transportation position. We've already signed contracts that are gonna bring in revenue for that. Let's talk a second about the non-benefited, part-time. When you look at that from sixty-three to seventy-eight, the first thing you say is, wow. Well, let's talk about what that is. These are fifteen new non-benefited, part-time positions, but they're not actually new positions. These are positions we have traditionally hired through the temp agency. What I have found since our last discussion last budget year is that in order for us to put someone on the city's payroll, you have to authorize a position. So even though the money has been in the budget under temporary positions, because we didn't have authorized positions, we still had to hire those through the temp agency. So as you can see, this is nothing but the three E's at work. What we're asking is no additional money. It's not gonna cost us any more money at all. Actually, it would save us money, 'cause remember, we pay the temp agencies a thirty-five percent or thirty-two percent premium for handling it. What this does, though, is it gives us positions so we can write a check. That's all this is. So in the end, whoops, in the end, what you're gonna have, go back one, is instead of sixty-three part-time, non-benefited positions, you're gonna have seventy-eight. So what does that actually mean? When we have lifeguards this summer, if we don't have a budgeted position, we can't write a check. Therefore, we can't hire them. So what we do is go to the temp agency. So by doing this, we will now have fifteen, what we call, pool positions. No, no pun intended with swimming pool, but there'll be pool positions. Some times of the year, some of those will be filled by lifeguards. Other times of the year, some may be filled with grasscutters. But what we need in order to write a check is budgeted positions, because the auditors have numbers, you know, we give them the numbers that are approved, and they look and see, okay, how did you get that person on the payroll when you don't have an authorized position? So this is really what I'll call a housekeeping issue, so that we can get back and implement what we talked with you a year ago about. Again, it doesn't, it's not an issue of money. It's an issue of process so that we can directly hire these people.
How many, as it is, how many temp positions do you usually keep up, have at any one time?
Well, during the baseball season, you know, Susan, I'll get you the, the actual answer, 'cause I don't know that answer, but I can give you an example. When we have a baseball program going on, you'll have people running concession stand, people running the scorebook, people who are the referees. So depending, you could have in one game, if you had four games going on at the same time, you could wind up with, who knows, twelve or fifteen people. Some of those, we're gonna continue to hire through the temp agency, because what we find is that somebody will keep score, and then they'll say, yeah, this isn't for me. So two days later, they're gone. What we're talking about with these fifteen positions, though, they are the people who, who we know have stayed with us the longest. For example, the lifeguards last year. We started Memorial Day, the same three lifeguards stayed with us all the way through until Labor Day, but we hired them through the temp agency. This year, we wanna hire them through the city, and we've actually worked some vacant positions and actually taken those vacant positions that are really full-time rather than part-time, so that we can write that person a check. So that's really what this is, is to allow us to be the ones who are hiring so we can give them a check.
So you say they are temporary, so it's not like somebody works twelve hours a week, fifty-two weeks a year. It's, they're just.
By law, they, they cannot work more than a thousand hours, which is almost, you know, the, the typical work year is two thousand eighty hours. So by law, they can't work more than a thousand hours, or they kick into certain retirements and those type things. These are all short-term jobs.
Do you have exposure on unemployment?
Oh, yes.
That kind of stuff.
So you, you still have exposure on unemployment.
So you could hire them for six months, and they could be unemployed, get unemployed.
And you have exposure on workers' comp.
Right, right. That's why the, the temp agency's charging to cover that.
And, and I wasn't, you know, I wasn't suggesting that the temp agency is making a tremendous amount of money. You know, for people like grasscutters, we really want them through the temp agency, because there's a tremendous turnover, and you do have liability, and you have workers' comp. So there are positions we would not want to hire through this. So you're right, we don't wanna move away totally from the temp agencies. But this request is to allow us to have fifteen non-benefited, part-time positions, no extra cost in the budget.
I think actually the unemployment may not be so much of an exposure, because I think HR is having them sign something when they come on board that says, you're hired from May first to June thirtieth, or, and this is your time. And I think that limits the exposure, doesn't it?
It does, it's a term of employment. So we, we agree upfront that they're here for two weeks, three weeks a month, and they sign that.
Thank you.
So you need authorization to increase the number of authorized positions by fifteen.
Fifteen, adding fifteen non-benefited, part-time positions.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
General fund balance. As you know, the general fund balance is basically our savings account. The part that you really focus on is the cash. That's the unrestricted, or I suppose the accounting term is now unassigned, or we also use unrestricted.
We change it every few years just to keep everybody interested.
Okay. This is not your total fund balance, because you have restricted funds as well as the unrestricted or unassigned. What you can see is that in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and so forth, we went through some lean years. Y'all have, y'all, that's not correct. The city council has a policy that we try to follow. It's not in writing, but you have told us that you want us to make sure, if at all possible, we have somewhere in the vicinity of ten million dollars in the unrestricted. That way, in case we have a major disaster or something happens. So this is the current status of your unassigned or unrestricted fund balance. It does not show two thousand eighteen, because those numbers are not yet audited. But these are the audited numbers. Want to comment on this? Are now, okay?
You're good.
So far, I haven't made any mistakes.
I thought our policy was rather than a dollar amount, it was a percentage.
Percentage.
Something like ten to fifteen percent.
It is.
Well, when you work, when you work out the general fund budget of forty-eight million dollars, and then you say ten to fifteen percent, you begin to get up into.
Okay.
You know, I like closer to twenty percent, that's where you get the ten million. But you are correct, sir, it's, it's a percent. This is what you've actually spent from time to time. We balance our budget every year on fund balance. What you can see is in the used column, in two thousand twelve, we budgeted four million. We actually used a hundred thousand. In the next year, we budgeted, but we actually put money back in the fund balance added to it. In fourteen, we used a lot, although we budgeted a lot, we used about a million. And this seventeen year, we budgeted two million. We actually wound up adding four million to the fund balance. What that tells you is that we are fiscally conservative. We don't waste money. It doesn't mean that you have money to throw at problems, but what it does mean is we're sound. The base budget, you have already approved certain things in the base budget. The base budget that was presented to you, and I rounded the numbers off, it's actually six hundred and ninety-eight thousand and change or whatever. The base budget is balanced at seven hundred thousand coming out of your savings account. The health premiums, which you spoke of a minute ago, you've now already approved, taking another hundred and fifty-five thousand. And the miscellaneous department items that we discussed, which you have approved, took another forty-three and change. So out of your base, for your budget approval so far, the fund reserve is going to provide roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. That's really a status check, so that as we get into the next series of discussions, you'll understand that you've already agreed that out of the number back here of seventeen million dollars, that you're going to spend a million of that already. Now, let's look going forward. We haven't determined anything regarding general compensation, and we haven't determined whether you're going to support the police scale or not. The numbers that I gave to you before were my math. As you know, you like Gail's math better than mine. So before tonight, Gail finalized all of the numbers for the, for the police scale. My numbers were generally in the four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty thousand. Obviously, I was off. So the actual number that she has calculated is five million, I'm sorry, five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We also have two other items that we need to discuss at a point, and that's street paving and tax rates. And we will be discussing those towards the end of the presentation tonight, and I think you're gonna be pleased with some of the information you're gonna get. Let's talk about compensation. I appreciate the work that Kimberly and the staff did relative to educating you on a whole series of comparables to North Carolina League of Municipalities and so forth. I feel like that we just need to get it down as simple as possible. So here's what I'd like to discuss with you tonight. I wanna show you my recommendations of what markets we compete with, how we should place our positions in each market, what is cost of living and scale movement about, wage adjustment fund, and police pay. When it comes to markets, I think you would agree with me, we have five hundred and fifty-six employees, but they are about as varied as you can come. There are people, and this is why I've come up with three markets. A lot of our jobs, probably over two hundred and fifty, maybe even three hundred of our jobs, it's just local. We're competing with the auto parts store across the street. We're competing with the construction company up the road. We're competing with the retail centers. They are local. When you look at a lot of our jobs, most of them come, the employees come from Monclova County. Some will drive from Carteret, Jones, Pender, Craven, but they don't drive or move here. For most of our jobs, from Asheville or Charlotte. There, it's a local market. The second group, which you'll see in a minute, is what I'm gonna call the regional market. That's the local market plus eastern North Carolina. You might have somebody move here from Greenville for some of these jobs that are gonna be considered regional jobs. You might have somebody move here from Fayetteville for a regional job. But even in the regional jobs, nobody's going to move here from Asheville or from Atlanta unless they're unemployed and need a job. And then, of course, you have national, which includes local, regional, and national. And those would be jobs such as, when you get tired of me and you're looking for a new city manager, you go out and find somebody on the national level. By the way, y'all didn't have to smile so quickly. So here are the benchmark jobs. I don't expect you to read them all, but you can pick up a couple. Let's color code it real quickly. The light blue, those are local jobs. Look at the list. Custodial worker, maintenance worker, meter, meter reader, sanitation worker, and so forth. Every one of those, you can see, and I think you would agree, those are people that we're gonna hire at a local market. Again, they are not, we're not competing with Fayetteville for that person. We might be competing with Anzalo County, or Anwasa, or the school board. So in this concept, you can see who I think we'll be hiring locally. The second part in green, you will see at the top of the second column, accounts payable specialist. There, it's blue and green. Why? Because there're gonna be some local people applying, and there'll be some regional people. So for an accounts payable specialist in Gail's area, of course, we know Gail is so wonderful to work with that people would move here from, where, Miami or Hawaii. But setting that aside, we're gonna have a larger pool of people. And then, of course, you can get over on the right-hand side, and you can see things like the chief information officer or the finance director. That's gonna be probably a much larger search. Maybe they're gonna be local, maybe they're gonna be regional, maybe they're gonna be national. What I'm asking you to agree to in this recommendation is, go back, that you agree that we don't have one market we're looking at. We're not, we're not worried about looking at the scales of everybody on the North Carolina League of Municipalities, because not every job do we compete with every. So in this concept, you can see who I think we'll be hiring locally. The second part in green, you will see at the top of the second column, accounts payable specialist. There, it's blue and green. Why? Because there're gonna be some local people applying, and there'll be some regional people. So for an accounts payable specialist in Gail's area, of course, we know Gail is so wonderful to work with, that people would move here from, where, Miami or Hawaii. But setting that aside, we're gonna have a larger pool of people. And then, of course, you can get over on the right-hand side, and you can see things like the chief information officer, or the finance director, that's gonna be probably a much larger search. Maybe they're gonna be local, maybe they're gonna be regional, maybe they're gonna be national. What I'm asking you to agree to in this recommendation is, go back, that you agree that we don't have one market we're looking at. We're not, we're not worried about looking at the scales of everybody on the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Because not every job do we compete with everybody on the North Carolina League of Municipalities. What I'm asking you is to agree that we really divide the workforce up into local, regional, and a national market. And again, just as an example, this isn't all of our positions, but what we would do as a staff is then we would place each job in the city in one of those three markets. So if you're looking for a maintenance worker, we really look at the local market and try to figure out, what does the local market pay for it? Not what does the average on the North Carolina League of Municipalities pay for it? That's the concept. I think that's my last comment on that. Any thoughts? Do you like the approach? Do you think it's not scientific enough? You want us to go back and do something different? What are your thoughts? What are your other thoughts?
I thought we've always had, had a group, as you said, some things are local, you know, we're, we don't need to be comparing a, a janitor in High Point to a janitor here. We're, we're competing against the base, or, or Onwassa, or, or school systems, whatever, for the janitors. And, and I'm custodial. And, and I, I've always thought we had a hybrid thing, and I do, I like the idea of going out to other municipalities, but I don't want that to be, because it's easy, I don't want that to be the road taken. I think this is a little tougher to, to do, but I think it's the right approach. I think, I think we do have tiers, or areas, that, that, that we compete in, and, and you just can't take a one-size-fits-all.
Well, aside from it being a logical schematic, the practical purpose is what, just for setting forth your recruiting base?
It's actually twofold. It's to set forth the parameters that we look for when we try to determine as a person properly compensated. And it's to make sure that we are having starting salaries that are realistic for this area, not a starting salary that is based upon, what, Asheville, or Charlotte, or somebody. I mean, the, the main thing here is to give us parameters, so that we understand that when we're looking, let's say again, for the accounts payable, yes, we are gonna look at what the region pays. But when we're looking for a admin one, we're just looking at what the local people pay, not what they pay in, again, you know, Asheville or Fayetteville, because those are not the people that we are competing with.
I like, I like what I see there.
Let me ask you a question. Based on a hybrid, is the cost of living in this area considered in that process? And the, you know, and that just based on the, the other people, people we're competing with?
I would say indirectly it is addressed, but not directly. But what we also know is, every region of North Carolina, there's a different cost of living. I mean, I was, my wife enjoys looking at home magazines, and the cost of a house on Emerald Isle is a little bit higher than the typical cost of a house in Jacksonville. But I'll also say to you, most of the people who actually work in retail in Emerald Isle are paid about the same as in Jacksonville, because most of them don't actually live in Emerald Isle. So cost of living is a factor, but it would be an indirect, indirect factor. Do you like the concept, or not?
Yeah, it's fine.
Fine? Okay. Thank you. Let's talk about the scale. Remember, we have 35 wage grades. Every grade has an entry level and a maximum pay, and that's called the scale. Now, as we've talked to you in the past about some of our recruiting issues, and in the police department specifically, we have mentioned to you that our entry salary does not automatically move when council gives cost of living adjustments. You saw a chart in one of the budget note follow-ups, that over the last six or seven years, we've only moved the scale twice. And one of the results of that is the entry level has stayed where it was. It didn't move. Others, such as the sheriff's department, they have moved their entry levels. So this is, the current policy of the city is this. Unless you say every budget, that the scale will move X percent, it doesn't move. What I'm asking you to do is reverse that, so it says the following. Adopt the policy that each year, the wage scales will move one-half the cost of living approved by council. For example, if the council gives a 2% cost of living, then the scale will move 1%. Why is it you don't want it to move the same amount? You'll never have a spread, because the person who got hired this year and gets a 2% increase, if you move the scale 2%, then the person who's hiring tomorrow is gonna be making the same pay as the person who hired a year ago. So the purpose here is to gradually move the ships apart. So the concept would be that until you reverse this policy, every year, the budget document would write, you would have authorized Gail to write into the budget document, that the wage scale will move one-half whatever the cost of living is. Now, if you give no cost of living, the scales don't move. If you give a 1%, the scale moves a half a percent. If you give a dollar figure, like $1,000, which you did once, then the scales would move $500. Whatever you give as a compensation adjustment, then the scale would move one-half of that. And of course, any budget, you can reverse that. But right now, it's by default the other way. And that's, I think, why we've gotten a little bit behind on some of our issues. This makes it where you have to consciously veto the scale moving. What are your thoughts?
How easy will it be to identify what the, the scale cost is?
Yeah, there's a...
I mean, that's, you know, it's kind of a mystery.
You know, we know, we know if we give a 1% increase, we know what the impact on the budget, but now we're saying there's also a half a percent scale increase. What does that impact on the budget? Because it's gonna affect this year, and of course, from then on. So there is an impact.
There is. The, the nice thing about the entry level salary is what? Unless you're adding employees, the person who's being hired is filling a position that you already budgeted at a higher cost. So for example, if a police officer was at $40,000, and they left us, we hired the new police officer at whatever it is, pick a number, $34,000. So there is a realistic cost, but it doesn't actually increase your budget, it actually reduces your salary savings due to vacancy. You see what I'm saying?
Sure.
Now, I don't know that we can actually compute that, but what we can do is, is show you some examples based upon, let's say, we can look at vacancies of the last 90 days, maybe the first quarter of this fiscal year, and say, here are the vacancies, here's what that person was being paid, when we hired the new person, here's what they got paid, I mean, that data, but you see what I'm saying is that you're always hiring a person at a lower salary than the person who just left.
But it's still a cost.
It's still a cost.
Still a cost. Now, if I'm understanding, you're not just talking about moving the entry, but you're talking about every step that you would have in that scale would go up.
Well, the...
I have, whatever, whatever the scale is. A half of the cola.
Well, that's correct. I mean, the whole, if, if the entry level is at 30, and the top is at 50, then everything in that shifts...
And that's how you avoid the compression problem.
Correct.
Which is costing us a lot of people.
What are your thoughts?
Well, if you take, I'm a little confused on this. If someone is at step five?
Well, hold on a second.
Okay. There's no such thing?
There is no such thing as the, you know, let me start that differently. The police step plan, if you adopt it, this doesn't apply to it. We're only talking about the current program that we have, which doesn't have any steps in it.
Oh, okay.
The current program, and I'll give a bad example, is, the current program is, if I'm hired as a, a maintenance worker, and I'm paid $35,000, there are no steps.
Okay.
The only way my salary moves forward is if you give a cost of living.
Yeah.
So if you go five years with no cost of living, I'm still making $35,000.
So there really is no scale in that one? All you have is an entry level, is that correct?
And a max.
And a max.
And a max.
So, for example...
But on the police, it would make a difference.
If you adopt the police scale, this doesn't apply. Because what we're actually talking about is, if you, on the police program, is setting up two different compensation plans. One for all the rest of the employees, and the step plan for the police. So this would not apply to police at all.
But you would have a step plan for the police.
You would have a step plan for the police, and we'll talk about that in just a minute.
And if we move this way, there's a possibility in the future to put everyone on a step plan?
You can do anything, you know, all, all it takes is y'all to vote and tell us what to do. You could put everybody. I have seen, in, not in the private sector, but I have seen documents, and Kimberly certainly has with her experience, where in, especially in union states, where every employee, other than management, is on a step plan, with guaranteed increases. Now, we're not suggesting that here. This applies to your current pay plan, not if you, it does not include police, if you put them on, on a step plan.
And we had a discussion before, that, that if we gave a cost of living, and somebody was already maxed out, they don't, they don't really participate in that cost of living, is that correct?
What they get is a bonus check, but it does not move their salary.
Right.
So if my, if my salary is capped at 40,000, and I get a 1% bonus, or a 1% cola, I get that in a check, but my salary's still 40,000.
So we're spending the money. The employee, the, the employees who are not at max get a spread out of a year. Employee who's at max, he gets a one-time.
Correct.
I like, I like the idea of the concept there with, with the general employee.
You want to think on this one a little more?
Well, you know, I, I like the fact that we're addressing the wage scales. I guess I, that's something that I'd never considered before, that we, that we weren't moving the wage scale. But I, what I don't, what I'm uncomfortable with is, what is the impact? What's the financial impact of this?
We'll see if we can quantify.
I know, and I know that's a tough one. And, you know, it's, it's pretty, pretty nebulous, you know, the impact, but, but somehow, you know, I mean, you could spend hours trying, figuring it out, and trying to get it down to a nance, but I'm just wondering what it, what it, a potential impact is.
Let us look, and what we can do is go back and give you, we'll look at the first quarter of this year as to the turnover, and show you, what was the person who left? We won't give you names, obviously, but we will give you, pick a number, if there were 10 positions that left, what were they making? When the person was hired, what were they making?
Well, you know, but, yeah. The, the problem with that is, though, you know, we, we, we use fund balance to, to balance the, the budget. And we know that we've got certain things that happen that, that, that we save on, and one of them, obviously, is employee turnover, if we hire somebody in an entry level and so forth, we understand that. And so, you know, there is an impact on what's happening to that fund balance. We either, you know, spend, spend more, or spend some of the savings, or whatever. That's really what I'm looking for, not, not necessarily what you're actually saving off somebody leaving, but what is the impact of doing this? What, you know, how much are we giving up, or...
Yeah, and we can cover that by doing this.
Okay.
We'll show you. What was the person being paid under the current system? What was the new person paid? And we'll just say, let's assume that that entry moved up 1%, then what would that salary have been? And that will tell you that it costs you, pick a number, $1,000. And, you know, it's easier for me to come up with these things, because Gail actually does all the work. So between the two of us, we will, we will come up with some data.
I would say between the HR and finance...
Are pretty difficult to quantify.
Boy, are you darn right it is.
It's like a moving target.
Boy.
I'm not sure, they're just the cost of doing business.
I think try to do the best you can to give us some idea of the impact. Like I said, I don't, I don't think it would be much, it'd probably be very marginal.
Well, let's see what we can come up with. That's, that's all.
Dr. Woodruff, in your research, if possible, can we see what a step salary would look like, with the municipality close to the city of Jacksonville that has implemented step salary for their employees?
I bet, yeah.
And make a comparison?
We will see what we can get, that, that will be...
A comparison of what?
Well, you're, you'll, when you go to the next subject, you'll see a little bit how that works, correct?
On the police pay.
I have a problem with steps, just, you know, just, they, they reward you for staying on the job, that's all it is.
No, no, that's not true. That is not true. I, I beg to differ, that is not true.
I was civil service for, federal civil service for 10 years.
That is not true, I beg to differ. I beg to differ. That is not true.
Well, explain, when we go over it, you can give an explanation as to what it takes
to move from one step to the next. It's, it's a little bit more involved than, what do you think?
The next thought has to do with a proposed cost of living increase. The adjusted CPI for this region is 1.8%. Now, that's based upon the, the published number as of December 31, 2017. Bear with me, because I'm gonna give you really an odd concept that, so, before you overreact, or, or just give me a moment. What I'm proposing is that across the board, now this assumes that you're not going to do the police pay plan. I'm not saying you shouldn't, that's a different discussion. But if we don't have a police step plan, then the cost of living would be 1.5% for every employee across the board, all 556 employees. The cost is shown there, roughly 334,000 for the general fund, water and sewer at 55,000, others at 55,000. In addition to that, you saw last week, when Kimberly and, and the group did their presentation, we do have some compression and wage inequities. They are complicated, and we can't figure all of that stuff out in time to adopt the budget. So here's what I'm suggesting. You also approve a wage adjustment fund of $300,000 out of the general fund, 20,000 out of water and sewer, and 25 out of the other. Why are those numbers lower? Because there are fewer employees in it. And what you do is, you let the manager work on this, under these guidelines, and determine where the real compression issues are. I'll be the first to tell you that I don't believe every city employee is underpaid. I just don't believe that. I won't, since we're on the air, and I don't want to hurt any employee's feelings, I will tell you, there are departments, and people within departments, that if they get a 1.5% pay increase this year, I think you've taken good care of them. There are other people that because of their scales not moving, and so forth, that we have compression. And that they should, some of them should receive, pick a number, a higher than 1.5%. The guidelines would be that, it wouldn't just be me doing the work, obviously, but Gail, and Kimberly, and the senior staff will work with the department heads, we'll look at compression issues, we'll look at hiring issues, we'll look at years in grade, the market, whether it's local and so forth. And we will then determine whether the people in this department all get X or does a third of them get this amount and a third of them get a lesser amount? And so I'm getting that amount. I mean, once again, and, and Kerry's sitting here, so I don't think he'll mind me using him as an example. In the sanitation department, we're now having real trouble with the entry level jobs. If we need to increase that, pick a number, by 4% or 5%, that doesn't mean that all 38 people in his department need a 5% increase. It means that some of them at the earlier levels where we have compression may need some adjustments, and some of the people who are further out may not need adjustments or vice versa. So what I'm trying to do is provide money that will address some of the issues we have in our pay plan. But this is not one where, in my opinion, one size fits all. You can't say that you can cure all of your wage issues by giving everybody a 4% pay increase. All that does is move the same problems just 4% higher. So this concept would be expensive. But what it would do, going back, is it would say for everybody, 1.5%. You'll set aside an additional $300,000 of general fund and $45,000 of other funds that the manager will work within these guidelines and that by October 1st, you would be implementing this. Now, I know that's, that's a, an odd approach.
So you're, you're rolling up the two, the two issues, the, the market, market changes and so forth, and then into this, as well as a 1.5% cost of living across the board?
And what I would say to you is, there are, in my opinion, there are a number of city employees who the only thing they'll wind up with is the 1.5% cost of living increase. Because, again, I see the pay of every employee. I see what they do. I know how they're compensated. I know how they're compensated versus their peers in the same group. I know how they're compensated between departments. And I can say to you, we have some people that I believe are underpaid. I can also tell you, we have people who I don't think are underpaid. And that's why a, pick a number, a 4% adjustment for everybody simply doesn't cure anything. It, it doesn't, it doesn't address the wage issues that some of our employees face. And I will also say to you, most of this money is going to go to our lower-paid employees. Think about that. I hope it's not a nightmare, but think about it. Now, let's talk about the police compensation. Adopt the pay plan, implement it July 1. It replaces cost of living completely for anybody who's in the plan. Let's look at the plan again. You've seen agencies that do it. I'd refresh your memory. Currently at the bottom, you can see the current range is 34.8 to 55.7. No? Here's what's going to happen. You get capped. We do not want a department, a police department made up of PO1s. So in this plan, you would start off at $38,000, which isn't as high as the sheriff's department, but it's certainly a lot higher than where we are today. We believe this will address some of your turnover issues. There'll always be turnover in any department because people are married, their spouse moves on, something happens, they decide that this really isn't like TV policing, it's the real world. So in this, you would have guarantees. You would not have a cost of living. Start off at 38, move to 38.5 and so forth. Come the fifth year, if you haven't advanced, as the chief has explained, the certifications they have to get, if you haven't advanced, then you're capped at $40,000. And all you'll get is a bonus. But it won't stick with you. The difference between a bonus and a pay increase is what? A pay increase stays with you forever. A bonus is, here's a one-time check. So let's say for discussion purposes, I'm at $40,000 and I haven't qualified to become a PO2. My pay is going to be $40,000, and let's say I get a $500 bonus. Next year, my pay is what? $40,500? No. It's $40,000. And if we don't give out bonuses, they get nothing. If we give out a $500 bonus, they get $500. So, again, this program is designed, if you pardon the bluntness, to force people to move to be the police certifications we want them to be. Mike will tell you. He doesn't want a police department made up of PO1s. The next level is the PO2s. And you can see that these steps are $1,000 apiece. But, again, after four years, when you reach the fifth year, if you're not ready to be a corporal, you're capped. You can be a corp, you can be a PO2 forever, but until council comes back and changes these scales, you're going to be at $46,000. You will get a bonus if one is given. And then, of course, with the corporals, which is, and I think Mike would agree, you, I know the mayor, I think he would agree, you want your police department made up of the P3s, which are corporals. These are the people who have eight to 10 years' experience. They're mature. They have proven themselves. They are the backbone of your department. You don't want to lose these people. And, of course, you can see the steps. Here's the difference between this step and the previous two. We can't continue to have steps to year five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So what would happen here is that in year four, you would have a guaranteed step. In year five, whatever cost of living council gives, that would go to your base salary. You don't get a bonus. So, for example, if you're at $51,000 and you get a 1% cost of living increase, your salary actually went to $51,510? Let's assume my math is right. That would, that's how that would move up. Now, you also would need to adjust, we're not putting sergeants and lieutenants on a scale, but because you potentially would have corporals at $51,000, you'll have to change the entry level for the sergeants from 44.5 to 52. You'll have to change the lieutenants from 49 to 58. And it, it, there is a cost to the plan. Now, as I said before, Gail has proofed these numbers now. Actually, she told me she was no longer going to let me do math in private, much less in public. So the cost to implement this plan is a half million dollars. The key, though, is once you implement this plan, the annual maintenance cost is roughly $87,000. And that compares to roughly a 2% cost of living increase, that you're going to give 2% each year. So you are talking a significant investment. On the other hand, I'd remind you, every time a police officer walks out of here, we've lost $35,000 to $50,000 in, in investment. And I asked Mike this morning, I showed him these numbers, and I will ask him to come up to the table, would you mind sitting next? You can sit where Michael Lozera just don't make any pizzas. I'd like to ask him, do you, do you support this plan? And do you believe it will address some of your turnover?
I, I think it will. Like I've, I've said before, in the, in the times that I've seen it with, in other agencies where they had step plans in different parts, as I've done assessments, most of, most of the agencies that have a step plan have very low turnover. I think, I think this is one step that we can use to, to at least retain the, the folks that we're, that we're training.
Yes, sir.
How does this improve our competitive position with the sheriff's department or Holly Ridge or, for example? Is it, it's not matching the starting salary, but is it a point where we want these officers to move quickly from PO1 to PO2 and then we become competitive at that level or?
You become competitive at the two and, and corporal, at the PO2 and the corporal level.
Okay.
We believe it will reduce people, you know, people may still move for $1,000. But right now, they're moving for $5,000 and $6,000.
And you might have some entry level that might move from 38 to 40, which is what the starting salary is for the sheriff. But the folks that we've, that we have significant investments in, I think this will address some of that concern about going from one agency to another.
Dr. Woodruff? I have a clarification, well, I need clarification just to make sure I'm understanding this with the scale. So say, for instance, we have a brand-new PO1 who is starting off at $38,000. And by year three, he or she has required all of their certification. So with having three years in the city, they are now ready to move to PO2, correct? So will their starting salary begin at the 42 or would it begin at year three, the 45, because they have three years already invested in the city?
It would begin at 42. And what they would do is they would jump, and let's use your three-year number, they would jump from $39,500 to $42,000. And the reason why is because if you jumped from year three to year three, you would suddenly have a, a tremendous cost that we haven't factored in, and it would cause compression within the, the P2s and P3s. I mean, there has to be what I'll call a chronology or a timeline that you go through. Where you do jump in salary is if you are really interested in getting all your certifications and you get them as quickly as possible, you don't have to go year one, two, three, four, and five before you get to the next step, year one, two, three, four, five before you get to the next step. I mean, I think, Mike, you have said before that the minimum time a person is a P1 before they can become a P2 is how many years?
Well, it depends. It depends on your education. So, so like a PO1, which is the scenario that, that you just brought up, could happen very easily if that person has a degree. So that degree cuts down the number of, of experience and the number of points they have to have because it's based on experience, points, and education. So, so the, depending on, on the officer, if an officer comes from another department, he might be able to move up quicker in our organization if he has those training points and his, his associate or bachelor's or master's degree.
And if he or she does not? How friendly is the system to allow them to move very quickly? Or there, or are there barriers that would impede that process for that person?
You know, we've been, of course, the mayor can speak to that a little bit about, about the programs that we've implemented with the community college so somebody can get their degree. We have the COPS program, which is all online, that allows an officer to take advantage of his BLAT plus, take, take classes online. And then they have an articulation agreement with Western Carolina that allows them to get their bachelor's degree the same way, all online. Also, they can work, work, the shift work and not be. And then, of course, we, we do allow officers while they're on duty, if they have a class, a particular class, to attend while they're on duty given our, our current workload.
And also, I mentioned, we still have that tuition reimbursement.
Yeah, we have the tuition reimbursement as well.
I was about to say that. Is, is that, is that going very well? Or is there a list for you to be approved in that process?
Kimberly, you manage that, what's the answer?
Right. So there is no waiting list. Everyone that applies, it, it gets the benefit at this point. We haven't had an abundance. So everyone that's interested has been able to be pushed through.
Does that open the council? I'm just joking.
No, I'm not.
We have a lot of, we've had a lot of officers take advantage of the COPS program. And, in fact, one of the things that we're going to do through our roll call is try to encourage that again.
Something, okay.
Yes, because we did that a couple of years ago. We got a lot of interest. And then we've got a lot of new officers, so we're trying to encourage them to use that. And the BLAT gives them about a semester of, of work. And then we have some articulation agreements also with the Justice Academy if they take report writing and council's English, if they take advanced traffic investigation, which has a lot of math. It counts towards their math. So there's, there's a lot of ways that they can do that.
Would you, for their information, would you explain how they accumulate training points towards their certification?
Yeah, so a training point, one training point is worth, is worth four hours of training. So if they have 40 hours, they get 10 training points.
How do you get training hours?
Well, like if, if I go to, if I go to radar class, 40-hour class, I'll get 10 training points for that ra, for that, for that training. And so there's an accumulation of, of report and, of points. It depends on your experience. It depends on your, your degree. And then those points also add to, for example, like when I first came to North Carolina, I had enough experience and education and training points to get my advanced degree, my advanced certificate within the first year. So it just depends on, on how many classes you attend. If you attend a radar class, you're going to get 10 points. If you attend SFST, which is Field Sobriety Test, you'll get 10 points. And CIT training, that's worth 10 points. And, of course, those classes that I just mentioned are classes that we require our patrol officers to have initially as quickly as they can as soon as they're off their training cycle.
Okay. I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, in the perfect world, this sounds very linear, and someone can easily say, I'm gonna go for it. But sometimes, things in a person's life that you had not calculated for, it can be an sundry of things. You've had a parent who has a sudden illness that now you have to move that parent in your house. You may have a special needs child that's born. You may have factors that's beyond your control that has now entered into your life that might prevent you being a PO1 that may have hit you as a P, your second year as a PO1, which now you don't have the extra time to move on that linear process. So three years later, you find yourself capped, not because you did not have the initiative, but there were things that happened in your life that was beyond your control. What do we do with those employees?
Well, that means the same for every employee that we deal with. I mean, we send, we send everyone to one school per year. That's 40 hours of training. Then there's the in-service training. And then there's other training opportunities that we have from time to time. For example, right now, we're doing an SFST class at our, at our police department. So it gives us a little bit more opportunity to get a little bit more, a lot more folks in than if we were sending them to, say, Wilmington and having to pay per diem or, or Raleigh or wherever it might be. So we have those opportunities. And, of course, you know, that's the idea behind the COPS program so that you can kind of work on that. And those college classes can also be used for training points as well, especially when we're talking about the math course that I just spoke of or the, the report writing course that I just spoke of. You take report writing course, you get the training points for the, for your advanced certificate, but you also get train, a, a, a degree or, or credit hours towards your degree. So there's ways that we can work with those folks. And, you know, obviously, we've worked very hard to make sure that there's opportunities for all our folks to get their advanced degrees. And we encourage that. And, of course, that's part of our promotional process as well.
Mayor, this might be a good place to just take a few-minute break and then we can come back. Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir. Let's go ahead and, we'll...
One quick question. How many personnel does this impact?
I think...
I believe it's 121 of the 133.
Well, no, I think it's 98. I think it's 98. I think it's 98.
But you have 133 sworn.
Yeah.
We'll get the actual number.
But I believe it's, it's 98. But I have to, I have to add those up.
All right. We're recessed now.
Appreciate it.
This was the slide where we showed you the cost of implementing the STEP Plan. During the break, the chief didn't quantify that there are 99 of the 134 officers that this would impact. Let's look at some, what I'll call some, some summary numbers. Now, some of these, you know, we asked a while ago, if you did a 1.5% cost of living increase for everyone, you can see in the middle column what that cost would be. If you did a 1.5% and also adopted the STEP Plan for police, where they don't qualify for the cost of living, then the cost of living adjustment for the general fund goes down from 334 down to 270. And in simple math, that's roughly $64,000. It would go down. The STEP Plan, if you adopted it, does require annual maintenance because people will move through the steps. That's estimated at $84,000, I'm sorry, $87,000. And if you notice, if you were the same year, if council gave a 1% increase and you didn't have the STEP Plan, those same employees would cost you $36,000. Or if you didn't have the STEP Plan, a 2% increase would cost you $72,000. So you can see that the maintenance of the STEP Plan is not overly expensive, but it is more expensive than the cost of living because you're guaranteeing specific $500 steps or $1,000 steps. Let's look at the impact on the, on the fund reserve. We've already said to you, base budget, health premiums, department issues, approved thus far, roughly $900,000. If you approve the STEP Plan, then you're actually committing roughly $1.4 million of your general fund balance. And if you did the other suggestions, which we've discussed, approved thus far roughly $900,000, a cost of living of 333, a fund adjustment of 300, a pay scale of $500,000 for the police, you're now up to $2 million out of your fund reserve. How does that compare, though, to what you've spent in the past in your fund reserve? I would remind you again, here are the numbers that show from '02 to '17, you've generally spent somewhere in the vicinity of $2 million or more of your fund reserve. So what I'm showing you is, it's not necessarily out of line if you do all the things that we just recommended. Doesn't mean you have to. I'm just giving you a relativity, that you're not stepping out of the normal routine of balancing the budget by spending somewhere in the vicinity of $2 million for the fund reserve. Those are things that we want you to think about. I'm not asking you to make those decisions tonight. I would like to have some direction on those things. What we can do is go on to the next series of things to update you on street paving while you're thinking of the others. Yes, sir?
Oh, you had a question? I do, too.
Cost of living?
Yes, sir.
What, do you have that 1.5?
Yes, sir.
Where are we? Well, I guess that my question is, I think on Wausau, it's 2.1 based on the southeast region. I forget the time period, but why the variance?
Because remember, my recommendation is 1.5 plus the adjustment pool. Now, if you don't want the adjustment pool, and you want to simply have a cost of living that goes to all employees, then you might consider a higher number.
So you think you may end up around 2% overall or something?
Probably 2% overall, but maybe even as high as 3%. Yes, you're, you're right, because it's $300,000 plus 333.
Would you go back two steps there, just for, just, I had a thought.
To...
One more back.
One more back.
One more.
One more back.
I guess like one more.
Okay.
This thing.
Okay.
So this envisions no promotion?
No. This does actually, this assumes that people will move through from PO1 to PO2 to PO3. And what we actually did, that's why it costs you $87,000 to maintain it each year. But remember, you're not giving them a cost of living increase.
Oh, so the 87 does anticipate people moving from two to three?
Yes, sir.
I mean, because it's not just a straight, but...
Well, I mean, it's, it's 98 people, and you're talking about 1,000 or 500 a year. So that's pretty close.
Yeah, but remember, some people only get a $500 increase a year, some will get a $1,000 increase a year.
But I was just wondering about the person that's going to get a, a $4,000, because they go from the third year of one...
To the first year of 42.
Two. So that's, that's factored into it, too.
It is factored into that.
Okay. Okay, it's just not the straight steps, it's the leaps as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
For me?
No. I, I thought you had a question, too.
Oh, no, 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 I'm good.
What's the decision time on this?
The decision time is any time between now and June the 30th. I mean, y'all, there comes a point where we have to know what your thinking is. While you're, if I may use the old term, cogitating on these things, I'd like to show you just a couple of other things that I think are important as you make your final decisions. And let's go now to street paving. As you know, we get roughly 1.7 million in Powellville. And roughly half of that, we wind up paving streets. You have 155 miles. Currently, we're paving anywhere three to four miles. We discussed options at one of our meetings. If you increase property taxes, which I don't think any of us, any of you want to do, you could, for every cent, you could pave an additional 1.7 miles. The auto tag, we talked about that. You can implement that on your own any time of the year. Property tax can only go now. The auto tag tax, you can implement any, any council meeting. It takes a little while for it to set up, so there's a delay of the revenue. But if you did this at the maximum that, that you can charge, and you can charge $30, but five of that would go to transit. If you do 25 for paving, it will give you about three more miles a year. Mr. Bittner suggested that we look at a local sales tax. So we have done some research on that. A quarter cent yields 2.4 million, or about 12 miles of paving. If you add 12 miles to the four miles you're already paving, for simple math, I'm gonna say that's 15 miles. Actually, I know it's more than that, but, okay. If you have 155 miles...
Ten years.
Every five years, you will have paved half the city streets. So here's what, you know, using Mr. Bittner's suggestion, we've done a lot of thinking from the staff standpoint about this. Here's what we would recommend that you authorize the mayor to write to the legislative delegation and ask for. A local bill... A local bill, referendum of city voters, quarter cent sales tax collected only within the city, it's good for five years, at the end of five years, it automatically rolls off, all proceeds go to paving. What you would then do is ask the legislative delegation to enter a local bill that would have these components in it. If they authorize the bill, you then set up the referendum. You'd have to decide, do you want the referendum as early as this coming November, or do you want it part of the city election a year from now, or a special election, or, or, or. But this is, before you do any of the other things, this is the one that has the potential to actually address your problem. Because in a five-year period, you would generate enough money to pave half your streets. And the other nice thing is, it's guaranteed that it rolls off. And the only way that it comes back is if you or a future council goes to a new referendum and asks the taxpayer to vote this on. And again, it would be a referendum of the city voters. It's not a countywide tax. It obviously would apply to every business that has to pay sales tax in the city of Jacksonville. And of course, anyone who uses those businesses, whether they're city residents or not, would pay that. And that's why you would generate over two million dollars a year. But if you really want to address your street paving program, this is the only one that has an opportunity to make a difference. So the question before you is, is this something you want us to pursue with your delegation or not?
Well, you know how I feel. And I, I've been doing an informal survey amongst some friends and associates, and I've yet to find anyone who would not vote for it. We all agree with the principle, as long as it was dedicated to local streets, they'd be for it.
I think it's, I think it's a good way to do this. Like you say, it's probably the most effective way to get the most of this paving done. And, you know, our streets are in bad shape. I mean, we hear complaints, you as council members hear complaints every day probably from someone that wants to talk about how messed up your streets are.
Well, we got a complaint today about gumbrance. The only problem is, this isn't gumbrance.
But we got a lot of city streets that are in bad need of improvement. And I have no problem sending a letter to the legislature.
What direction do you want to give?
I'm for it. The city voters are going to be the ones that make the decision. They're the ones that are going to say, hey, we're willing to pay this to fix our roads if they don't.
It's their option. We're not forcing a thing on them.
Right. So I'm willing to back the mayor sending a request on a local bill.
Second. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there any discussion?
I was going to say, the only thing I'd point out is, I think it might be better to tie it to the local election as opposed to trying to rush it through to fall. Because there's no, we cannot spend money to promote or deny this. So if you had it coinciding with the local election, then the candidates could have the chance to talk about it and it'd just be, and you would have, you know, you know, people that vote in our local elections are locally concerned.
I don't disagree with that, but I'd say that it wouldn't be, I don't think it'd be too difficult to get some groups behind this thing to really advertise it for the city in terms of the interest of the city.
No, I.
Rotary clubs and everybody else could form a citizens, a citizens advisory group.
But again, you are right. The city cannot spend money lobbying for this issue. All we can do is set the framework, and then the public has to decide, do they support it or not.
But we can advertise an informative piece in terms of what it would do.
Yes.
Carmen, how much would it cost us as a city to put something on the ballot apart from the regular city election? It would, there would be a substantial cost to that, right?
That's a good question, Mayor. I'll see what I can find out.
Seems to me the cost would be incurred if you put it on this November's ballot.
That's what I mean.
Instead of, when you're already, you're already in the cycle, you're paying for November nineteen anyway. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't be any additional cost.
We will find that answer. I think you are correct. It would be a nominal cost.
Because you're already setting up the election.
Right, I was saying, as opposed to this kind.
Yes.
If we're out of this then altogether.
You know.
Anyway.
Any other thoughts on that?
Okay. Everybody was in favor?
Yes, you had a vote. Yes, sir, we took that.
Now, the other part is, obviously, John Carter, your city attorney, the very handsome city attorney of the city, will have to give us very strict guidelines that we will share with you and the public as to what we as a government can and cannot do relative to that referendum. We will follow the strict. The next thing we'd like to share with you is tax rate information. And at this point, I'm really going to turn this over to Gail, so, Miss Maids, please.
This is just a table showing you what the values are, or the current estimated values are for nineteen compared to what they were for F Y eighteen. As you can see, everybody's gone up a little bit, some more significantly than others. Now, our current tax rate is point six four two for every hundred dollars of valuation. The revenue neutral, assuming the estimate that we got from the county, is sixty-four point six eight cents per hundred of valuation. That's an increase of point four eight cents, about a half a penny. These things are important because they all, I can see you got a question.
If you have more value to tax, why is your rate going up as well?
Because historical growth over the last three years has been one point one seven, I believe, percent, and our tax value changed something less than that. I know it doesn't make any sense, but the valuation of the property that made up that growth went down. So with the revenue neutral, you're allowed to assume that you're acquiring more properties that are not taxed now at the same rate you were the last three years, if that makes any sense. You're allowed to assume that your growth would be one point one seven again this year. And that's revenue neutral. It is not exactly the same dollar. Yeah. Okay?
Definition game.
Yes. And it's defined in the statute.
I was going to say, that's state defined.
And the six point, sixty-four point sixty-eight assumes that there are no more changes in the valuation that are significant. The tax assessor has estimated what those changes will be. I think I told you before, there are three more cases to go to equalization review this week. But he's anticipated what he thinks those will be in the numbers he gave us. Now, property tax affects our sales tax. Our property tax levy is the property tax value times the tax rate. Then the distribution percentage is Jacksonville's levy divided by the total of all levies in the county. That will be the county and each of the municipalities, including Jacksonville. So it's our percentage of the total levies in the county. So if you think about that for a minute, anybody's movement in property tax value and in tax rate affects everybody's percentage of sales tax. It's a lot of moving parts. So just looking at our change and everybody else's change in tax value, property value, and assuming that nobody makes any changes in their rates, we could lose a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in a year.
And that's because of the growth in the county and, like she says, that's property values only. Okay?
And for timing sake, the property tax levy affects sales tax distribution beginning nine months later. So the tax distribution will be affected for the March sales. So it would affect three months of this current, this year we're budgeting for now, and then nine months of the next year. So decisions that are made about the tax rate right now will only affect nineteen for three months, but it will affect twenty's budget for nine months.
So the next slide.
Interesting, interesting.
Okay. So one cent change by Onslow County, and that's just one cent change by Onslow County, produces a loss of about a hundred thousand dollars in sales tax, assuming everything else stays the same. That will be twenty-five thousand dollars in F Y nineteen and seventy-five thousand dollars in twenty. Now, we've all read that the county is talking about a three cent tax increase. That will be three hundred thousand.
That would be in addition to the hundred and fifty-eight thousand you said that we would lose right off the top?
Yes, sir. That's this slide. In F Y nineteen, if they raise their rate one cent, we would lose twenty-five thousand for that, and then a fourth of the hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so a total of sixty-four thousand. And if they raise it three cents, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred.
And then, of course, in the twenty budget, if everything else stayed the same, because we know valuation, we won't have revow, you could be looking at, on the three cents, you could be looking at four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of impact on your sales tax.
For fiscal year twenty.
In fiscal year twenty. Now, the good news is, that's our last one. Here's what.
Well, we've said it before and needs saying again, the property tax formula for distribution is so unfair, it rewards people for raising taxes. And what makes those others suffer.
Plus, it rewards the wealthier communities. So I see that as an equity problem.
You have addressed many of the issues that we discussed tonight. My memory says that we have now direction regarding water and sewer rates. My memory says that you have also addressed the issue of the positions. You've received information on the fund balance. You've made no decisions on the general compensation, nor the recommendations that I had in there relative to certain parts. You have agreed on the three markets that I suggested. I believe that you agreed on the scale movement. Is that correct, Carmen?
I don't know that we talked really about the scale.
Okay, maybe you didn't do that. So the things that are still left to address then, well, let me go on down the way. Street paving, we've gotten direction on what we want to do there. So the topic still to decide are the things in general compensation as to scale movement, what type of cost of living, do you want to adopt the J P D scale plan? And then eventually, we have to get down to final tax number, which will be dependent on how much fund reserve. So those are items that we can continue to discuss tonight, or we can meet one week from now on the twelfth. Hopefully, Mr. Lozera will be present and we can try to finalize those issues. But according to our count, those are the only things left for us to discuss. Are there items that you remember that we don't?
Council? Want to come back in a week and discuss it further?
We can, although I'm ready to discuss the police department, but I'm willing to wait, you know, either way.
Whatever the pleasure is of the council.
Well, one thing about the place, I, there'd be some who might argue that it doesn't go far enough, but I think it goes, it goes as much as we can afford to do it, it's a good move.
Put it out there then.
Is that your motion? You will make it?
I'll make that a motion, that we approve the compensation plan for the police department.
I'll second that. All right, go ahead.
Further discussion? All in favor, State Department saying aye?
Aye.
All ayes. That solves that.
I think we've got to address, we've got to address that talent, you know, leaving us and going elsewhere we've got to. That's important to us.
Stop the train.
So you want to consider the general compensation next week?
Yeah, because I think we still had, I still had a little concern, you know, but I'm, I'm the, I forget now what I was concerned about, but.
Well, the impact on the general.
Yeah, 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 on the.
Impact of the scale.
Right, moving the scale. It really wasn't so much the cost of living or anything, it was really the messing with the scale a little bit. Although I'm fine with the hybrid, I think we've already settled that on the market.
So if we did that, we wouldn't have a meeting next week?
I think we would have a meeting next week, right? What we're saying.
Well, the issue, the only issues left then are, what are you going to do with the general employee compensation issues? And are you, and that really has three parts. Are you going to move the scale? Are you going to give it across the board? And are you going to set up the adjustment pool? Those are the only issues left then.
And also, do we move the scale also on an annual basis?
Correct, yes.
So we're coming back next Tuesday.
Well, we, late today, we did something that we normally don't do. We, and maybe we should be doing this on a regular basis, it's not a bad idea. We normally, you normally don't see workshop slides until you get here, which sometimes puts you at a disadvantage. We were working on these slides, proofing numbers, I mean, literally up until three o'clock this afternoon. So we forwarded this entire program to you. What we will do is, we will, you obviously have that, but we will skinny this down now just to those issues that are left on compensation and resend those to you in the morning. That way you can see, anything about the general fund balance, anything having to do with the general fund balance or the pay, that will be the skinny down version, so you can really concentrate on that. Because what you have to get comfortable with is the bottom line of, how much of your fund reserve are you comfortable spending?
Or obligating.
Yes, sir.
Whatever you want us to call it.
I got a question before we leave tonight. Going back to that whole thing on the general compensation and doing that, doing the comparison that you have recommended us to do, at what point are we going to do that study to determine where those changes need to be made, or how those positions are going to be looked at as far as?
Well, if you gave us a direction on June the twelfth next week, that that's what you wanted us to do, then we, as a staff, would begin immediately to work through every one of those. Because what you will do is literally print out every employee, literally every employee other than police, because you've now taken the police department significantly out of that program. And we would begin to do the analysis of where they fall and who actually needs adjustment. That will take weeks and weeks of analysis, because it really isn't a computer program where you just simply plug in this times three percent.
Those markets that we've identified.
Well, what you're really going to do is not really, in that, is you're not so much looking at the market. looking at the market as you're looking at internal equity. And, you know, the concept there was that we would do that administratively, we can certainly bring it back for you to bless. The problem is that normally you don't get involved in blessing individual pay.
And I don't want to start a train.
You don't want to get into that.
No, but I think that would be a good time to, when you're addressing the compression and what you think are perhaps underpaid, and that's an opportunity to evaluate the markets that you've identified. And I see that as taken at least till October. And, you know, Angela and I were talking, you know, when you do something like this, we don't want to be, the council should not, and probably do not want to be involved in all the micro decisions that have to be made. We expect the city's upper management staff to make the decisions, and we, I think we all have confidence in y'all's leadership in doing that sort of thing, so.
Thank you. I agree. 5 o'clock next Tuesday. Mayor suggests that since we're going to have a rather light agenda, that we include a personnel session for the evaluation, or discussion of the evaluation of our two employees.
I think that'd be a good opportunity with a light agenda, so. Everybody all right with that? Ready?
Thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Motion two, John.
Second.
All in favor?